So I'm going to call the public meeting back in session. And I'll start with, I guess, board president's remarks. So for the next month, I'm the board president. Well, congratulations. We made it past Memorial Day. Hopefully, we'll accelerate the reopening of the world, and particularly in Westchester and Bronxville. And we'll get back to business as soon as we possibly can. Maybe in June, we can do this in person. I'd like that. So thanks again to everybody for all their hard work. I got to spend an hour with Connie, yes, a couple of days ago, signing diplomas, which was fun. Jen, if your daughter doesn't mess it up, maybe she'll she'll get that diploma pretty soon here.
Holding it over her head.
So look, I think nobody enjoys this this environment, but we're on our way back to the old the old ways, which I think is great. And and thanks again to all the teachers, administration, staff, the team in the school for doing everything they're doing in this difficult time. We'll start the formal agenda with the approval of the prior minutes. Everybody got a copy of that, had a chance to review it.
There are two sets, the May 7 special meeting and the April 1st meeting.
There's two sets of, right, April 11th and the May 7th. So can I get a motion to approve the those minutes as previously presented?
No move. Second.
Arlene.
And Jen.
Okay, so Connie, do you need a roll call? Can we just all vote?
I can see everybody. Just unmute yourselves, board members, and you can all vote.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Any abstentions? Thank you. I guess the next thing, Dan, do I turn it over you for the budget hearing?
That is it. We do a quick public hearing. And then, I believe Connie, at the end, the public will be able to weigh in. Is that how we're going to do it?
Yes, I will check the YouTube channel and my email. So the hearing is officially called to order at 7:21 PM for the record.
Great. I'm going to try and share a screen here so we can go through slides that most of us have seen a lot of so far. Can anybody see, everybody see that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Great. So we're at the end. We're at the June referendum, which obviously is going to be a little bit different this year with absentee ballots. They should be going out to residents along with the budget notice probably this coming week, right Connie?
The budget notice, the six day budget notice went out a few days ago. So yeah.
And and with this budget, we're looking at projected enrollment of about 1,617 students, which is fairly stable over the last five years. We've tend to drop about 10 or 20 each year over that time period. We're very interested in looking at kindergarten to see where we're going to be. Other than that, our section sizes are fairly stable.
Dan, when you look at those numbers, I was kind of looking at the the trending down of K through 5. Is there any particular one year that there's a big drop off? Or is it just steadily every year we're getting less kids? I know there was that one extra section. I don't remember where that was.
It seems we dropped a section. And we're following that with maybe another dropped section. You know, so whereas we used to have six in each year, maybe kindergarten, one year we had five, and taken five up to first grade, and maybe starting the next year with five in kindergarten.
If you're not, if you're not speaking, can you put your thing on mute, please?
And then, let's see, so our tax levy cap, as we've discussed in a lot of prior meetings, is at 2.92%. But you know, that's, that's a lot of money. That would, if we went up to the cap this year, you know, that would be probably close to, you know, one and a half million dollars increasing the tax levy. We're not asking for that this year. We're asking for something more in the range of what we've seen over the last few years. Are the tax levy increase we're looking for is under 1%. And the budget, projected budget increase, I believe, is about 1.2%. The budget we are asking for is, let's say, $50,099,483. And most of that is going, we're asking to come for instruction. This is something that I issue in the budget newsletter. I don't really go with this one at the public hearing, but Mike Finley asked, as part of Finance Committee discussions, asked me to break down the budget a different way by program. And you can see in the next slide. Here's what instruction is broken down. You can see, for instance, regular school teachings, about $15 million. All these special ed lines, the ones that begin with 225, they, you know, they add up to, it looks like, about five or $6 million. Athletics is about $960,000. And all of that adds up to about the $27.5 million, 20, oh, I'm sorry, $28.6 million that we spend on instruction. And that's up about 3% year over year. We then look at benefits and inter fund transfers. You know, benefits are a significant portion, obviously. If you look at employee retirement, teacher retirement, and social security, and then throw in medical insurance, you're you're looking at close to $10 million. And the inter fund transfer at the bottom is mostly debt service. And then we have general support. Most of general support, at least $3 million worth, three and a half million dollars worth, comes from just running the building. Actually, close to $4 million worth. Operation of plant, maintenance of plant. And then Business Administration, Superintendent, Board of Education expenses, and the like are in this area of expense as well.
Dan, just a couple of questions on the last two slides. So the one thing that kind of jumped out at me was the medical insurance. It hasn't gone up that dramatically. Is there a particular reason? I remember you talking about this at some point, but I can't remember why that's the case. I mean, when other people are receiving much more dramatic increases than this.
It went up. The current year, we were budgeted 5.2 million. It came in far less than 5.2 million. So it's coming in this year around 5 million. And then next year, we're going to be at about 5, 5.2 million. And next year is low because the Swiss chip board, you know, saw the writing on the wall this year and is using fund balance to keep the the rate lower than trend. I think the overall increase for Swiss chip, which probably 90, over 90% of our employees is the Southern, the statewide health insurance consortium with a lot of Southern Westchester districts, that increase in premium is only, is less than 2%. So then versus a trend of about 7 or 8%. It's going to be hard to duplicate that next year, but I'm on the board and we're going to try.
That's correct. And then, then I was looking at operation of the plant and then maintenance of the plant, which is kind of the, I think it's the physical structure of the building.
Yeah.
How do we feel about that? Because it kind of jumps around a little bit. Is this going to, with the construction we've been doing, is this going to be trending down, staying about the same, or?
Yeah. If you look at the 1621 line, that, remember last year, we had the PA system in there? That, that's why. You know, we threw the, we needed to redo for the PA system last year for safety issues. So that was in there. And then we don't, we don't need to do that again this year. So it came out. And then transportation is fairly stable. Well, we jumped in applications this year. We're going from, you know, high 80s to over 100. So that budget may be low, but as with all budget lines, we deal with it when the time comes. It all depends where those kids are going when the roots come out and fall. Let's see. Okay, so, as I mentioned, our estimated, our proposed budget for 2020, 21 is $50,099,483. We collect almost $6 million in revenue that offsets that. And just with that revenue, our tax levy change would be about 2%. However, as the board will see later on in the meeting, when I go over our current financial performance, we're doing fairly well this year. And we saw fit, the board saw fit to offset next year's tax levy with additional $500,000 from fund balance. And the corresponding adjustment to the tax levy is downward to 0.88%. Again, compared with the calculated cap of about 2.9%, we are, you know, $884,000 under the cap. What does that mean for tax rates? Not surprisingly, with the recent changes in the economy, the updated assessment rolls are down about 1.6%. Overall assessment rolls are down $54 million. So this, the estimated tax rate is going to be about $14.06 per thousand. And that's an increase of about 2.6% over last year, which was 13.7%. And the tax rate over the last 10 years has jumped from anywhere from 13.3% up to 14.3%. So we're going to be well within the range over the last 10 years of where we've been. But obviously inching upward and pinching a little bit as the assessment rolls decline. And the decline in assessment rolls are due to people challenging their assessments through the village and and receiving reduced assessments. And that's it. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the public may have or the board as we put this budget up for absentee ballots in two weeks.
Great, thanks, Dan. Any questions from the board first? Okay, Connie, do you have any public?
You're on mute, Connie.
Connie, we can't hear you.
You're on mute, Connie.
Hey. Connie, you're on mute. There you go.
Okay, so Brian, I'm showing on the YouTube that it says the chat is disabled for this live stream.
Yeah, we're, I'm clicking on that now, but nothing, nothing came through.
Any, any email questions or comments, Connie?
Just from Sarah Clifford saying that she is waiting to see what the start time for the meeting is. So let me just tell her we're on.
So Dan, on the five and a half or so, 5 million or so that's non-state, non-local property tax related, that includes the state aid as well as what local merchant, Westchester sales tax.
What's that?
What else is in there besides the state aid?
A lot of it is special ed tuition's a big line, borderline property taxes that we take in from payments from Mount Vernon and Yonkers, borderline properties, who send their kids to the Bronxville schools. Miscellaneous revenues a little bit, not a lot, only $100,000. Interest income and the like.
Thank you.
And a little, a little bit of non-resident tuition, about a couple hundred thousand dollars for regular education kids.
Okay, Connie, I'm inclined to move on. But I guess if you get questions related to the budget, we can, we can open that back up to the public just because of the technical. I mean, if Ms. Clifford has a question, we can go back to her, but.
Brian, you don't see anything in the chat feature, right?
No, I don't.
Okay, okay.
Okay, Roy, I think.
Okay.
I think, Roy, we're up to you.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everybody. It's good to see you all. I agree with John. Hopefully, we'll be in person again soon. That would be great. Since the last time we met, there's been a lot of activity going on in the schools. And certainly, the distance learning, things that our teachers are doing, I think, have been received well. And we continue to improve as we get, we get better at this whole remote learning environment. I want to extend a big thank you to the administrators and the staff members, teachers, who worked so really, so very hard on providing an education for our kids through the remote learning. You know, it's been a series of roller coasters and starting off great, and then trying to figure out ways we can improve upon it, doing too much, too little, not enough, too much, the whole bit. And we're, our goal is to get it right. And the goal is to provide a good education for our kids. And I know that all the teachers and administrators would agree that we're, you know, we want the best for our kids. And and I think they're committed to doing that, to the best of their abilities. So as this continues, we will continue to get better. But I'm hoping that come the fall, we won't need that expertise as much as we do now. But we'll see how that works out. But in terms of the other things that are going on, we had a, what I thought was a pretty, pretty fabulous Memorial Day ceremony. On Memorial Day, we had an opportunity to honor the veterans, and particularly those who lost their lives in the wars. See some nice support from the, from our local veterans who do attend and look forward to our ceremony each and every year. They were so thankful that Bronxville continued the tradition that was so very important to them and to our community. So I want to thank a number of people who helped, you know, work that out, including our Brian Parker, who's kind of the wizard behind the scenes with all the technology stuff for us, but also the teachers and trish with those kindergarten kids, who they were just absolutely fabulous with their hats and everything else that went into it. So I'm happy we're able to continue that for the benefit of our community. And more importantly, to honor our servicemen and women for their efforts. And then on Tuesday, we had a senior car parade that went off quite well. We had three different groups of about 30 or so cars each. And it was really nice to see. It was great to see our staff members lined up saying, you know, flying the flag and having banners and all kinds of things to to honor our senior class. The, the police were just outstanding. Someone thanked Chief Statuary Alley for his cooperation, support, and helping us get that together and blocking up the roads and all those kind of things. I had the opportunity to ride in the first group of the caravan cars. And it was really, really terrific to drive through town, everybody waving and, and, you know, thanking and congratulating the senior, senior class. And particularly moving was when I saw the hospital workers lined up outside the hospital with a big banner that said, "Congratulations with the class of 2020." It was just so really, really touching to see. And I want to thank you of them for their support as well. But in fact, I think Ann has received a number of emails and say, well, we liked this so much, it should become part of our tradition as we send the senior class off in the Bronxville school. So be careful what you wish for.
I'll take it upon myself to speak for the senior class here and, and really reiterate our thanks. It was awesome. And I didn't know how it was going to go off, but it was so great. And it might, we're driving around, and my daughter's like, this is amazing, just all these people out cheering for them. They've missed so much. And it really, really worked fabulously. So thank you, guys.
Yeah, it was terrific. Thanks, Jen, for that. Appreciate that. And then at the end, you know, a lot of kids went over to the library by their, by their signs that were in the ground and were able to take pictures with their sign and their family members. So that really, really worked out well for us. And then thankful that the students were well behaved and acted appropriately, which just made, made the event even, even better for everybody. So that was terrific. And then I know we started our senior shadowing as well. And there's been some really impressive things going on for the benefit of our senior class. If you looked at the lineup of opportunities for our kids with the number of high level executives in various corporations, it's just truly, truly amazing. And I know they had the Hearst Corporation one today that I understand was just an amazing event for our kids. So we want to just thank, thank you to the community for stepping up for us and providing our kids with that level of opportunity. Other than that, there's real no news on the state front in terms of guidelines for reopening yet. There is a state level task force that's being formulated. I also participate in the task force by the Lower Hudson Council of School Superintendents, trying to, to look at various scenarios for reopening. And we have our local strategic task force as well that we formed that we'll be meeting again with next week. And Tom Evans, thank you for being a part of that with us, who are going to be, you know, we're going to be evaluating all the different scenarios and all the different things we potentially could need in order to open up safely in September. We know that the governor has announced in one of his press conferences that schools were included, are included in phase four opening across the state. We're now in phase one. So if everything goes well, and every two weeks we open up, that puts us in mid-July. So I'm hoping we're included in that and that things continue to, to, to go well in this pandemic and that we'll, we'll get back open again and have some normalcy back in our children's lives. But we know there's going to be things that we face down the lines. And as I told the committee that we're working with internally, the best case scenario would have us, or have me wasting all of their times being on this committee. So all that preparation for nothing would be terrific. So that's what we're hoping for. But to be determined once we get some better guidelines by the state. And I think Dan's going to update us on construction later on on the agenda. But I will tell you, I had the opportunity to tour the construction sites the other day as well. And it's really moving along at an impressive rate. I think everyone, once we're complete, everyone will be extremely impressed with the various things that are going on. The cafeteria skylight is just amazing when you stand in the middle of that and see that on the expansion. And the Learning Commons, I think, is going to provide just a super space for our kids to have all kinds of small groups, large groups, innovative type space to to learn and, and teachers to teach with. So we're really looking forward to that. And I'm very, very pleased with the way the construction's going. It's one of the silver linings that we have through this pandemic. And pretty soon, I know they're going to be starting to tear down the curtain wall, too. So look forward to that being completed. And that's, that's about it for my report, John.
Thanks, Roy. I think we have a resolution with regard to the calendar. We have to do, right?
I do apologize, yes. As I communicated with the public and with the, with the governor canceling spring recess for, for everybody, we had to be cognizant of our BTA contract, contract with the Teachers Association. So by canceling those days, would have been five days over our limit for the teacher contract. So it seemed prudent at this time to cut back on the end of the school year, since we're not tied into the regions this year, and end school for students on the 19th of June. And last teacher day would be on June 22nd with the superintendent conference day. So that's what the calendar resolution reflects.
Right, so it's relatively lengthy. So folks, the gist of it is in that resolution. So can I get a motion to approve the calendar modification as described by Roy?
Motion. Who was that?
It can be me or Tom, anybody.
John, and second?
You can do me.
It was Jen. Okay, any discussion of questions on that? Great. All in favor? Aye. Wave. Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Dr. Kelly, I think you're up.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. It is nice to see your faces. I want to echo what Roy had said, as well as John, in terms of just how grateful we are to all the administrators, the teachers, and the parents who have really stepped up and have become even stronger partners with us since mid-March. And we are very grateful for that. I have a number of items before you this evening. The first one is to accept Anna Batacola's retirement. And as much as she wishes, that this doesn't have to be public, it does. She is going after 15 years of service to the district. She will be retiring effective November 1st. We wish her very well. And we are grateful for her dedication to not only our students, but to the greater Bronxville school community. And we will certainly have ample time to honor and celebrate her between now and November 1st. In addition, we have a resignation, unexpected resignation of a high school counselor. That process to hire is well underway. And we have been in touch with all of the juniors, especially of her current caseload. And I want to take a moment and thank Ann Meyer, our high school principal, who took the time to touch base with every single junior family of her caseload. So thank you, Ann. In addition, we have two leaves of our current faculty that you need to consider, as well as, this is the time of year where the board approves any part-time employees. Part-time employees are year to year. And so we have six district wide for you to consider. And then lastly, we have a motion to appoint the election personnel, which we will need in June. So I ask you to consider items A through K.
Thank you. So does K includes the election personnel?
Correct.
Correct. Okay, so this is pursuant to the personnel report that was previously distributed to the board. Are there any questions for Dr. Kelly on the, on the items she listed? Can I get a motion to approve items A to K?
No move.
That was Arlene?
Yes.
Thank you. Can I get a second? Mike Finley beats them to the punch. So before we vote, or we do it after, but Anna Batacola, I'd like to just say thank you very much for all of your service. Let me see if I can find you there. Okay, great. Thank you very much for all of your service and your leadership at the Guidance Department. 15 years is a long time, and you've certainly made an impact at the Bronxville school, and we really do appreciate it. And the 15 cohorts of seniors who've graduated and gone on to college, and are, they themselves now may be in professional roles pursuant to your guidance. So thank you for that. And I'm sorry we can't be there in person today to congratulate you.
Here, here.
So all in favor of items A to K? I guess wave at Connie if you are. Aye.
Thank you.
Any nays or abstentions?
Motion passes.
Thank you. The motions all pass. Dan, I believe you're up.
I have a financial update through March, now projecting approximately $1 million in surplus with about $700,000 coming from expenditures. I see expenditures slowing dramatically due to COVID. You know, we're not here to be spending a lot of money on things. And, and correspondingly, you know, increased COVID expenditures pale in comparison to what we're not spending. And we're, we expect a surplus of about $300,000 from revenues. So we're looking at, at least as of now, about $1 million. That number could grow even more over the next month or so as we close down purchase orders. As I mentioned earlier, half a million of that is already reflected in the budget that, that we went over as being allocated to the 2020 that we went over as being allocated to the 2020, 21 tax levy. So it was a, financial wise, or financially, it was a successful year, probably by no other measurement anyway.
Dan, when I looked at the, the revenues and just two questions. So we've got sales tax coming in. It looks like as of March, 251,000, but you're projecting 450,000. Is there delay there?
There's delay in when they get us the money. So we only have two payments of about 125,000 each or so.
Okay.
So we're probably expecting, you know, I'm expecting that to nosedive a little bit in the, at least our fourth quarter. It will be the second quarter for the county, I believe, but when those come in. So that is a conservative projection I'm carrying through on that.
And Dan, I think I saw on the reserve section on the lower right-hand side of that page, we established a TRS reserve, I believe, previously, right? This year? And obviously the goal is to, is to put something in that reserve so we can make use of it. Is the idea with some of this surplus over and above the 500 that you talked about moving forward to, to fund some of that into this TRS reserve?
I would imagine. We'll have a finance committee meeting towards the end of June where we discuss the insurance package and year-end transfers. So I would imagine, you know, that would be on the agenda as well as if, if the board would choose to add to the, the construction reserve or, you know, start reducing the tax surcharge reserve to fund either one of those as well.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions for Dan on the, on the financial report? Dan, we don't have any action items on this, do we?
We do. There's three action items. One, one is, the first one is, is very, you know, this is about as mundane as it gets, extending our trash bid. We're very happy with our hauler. We want to extend them at the CPI. And they've been doing a real good job working around our construction as well. That's the first one. The second one is actually foundation grants. We have a, for the total for the, the current school year is going to be over a million dollars when you consider the 575,000 that they've kicked in for the Innovation Center. And then an $8,000 donation from the boosters, the athletic boosters for football helmets that we decided to transition to this year. So those are the three action items.
For the members of the public, they all appear on the agenda.
Okay. Any, any questions or discussion with regard to those resolutions on the financial action items? Great. Can I get a motion to approve? Connie, we can do all three at the same time?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve financial action items A, B, and C?
No moves.
Arlene, thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Jen?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, it goes without saying to the foundation, thank you very much. This is a record year, I suspect, for, for foundation giving and their involvement in the regular giving is fantastic, but the, the Innovation Center, which hopefully will be completed in the next few months, looks to be a great addition to the school facility. So thanks, thanks to the foundation for that as well. Okay, can I get a vote? All in favor of accepting items A, B, and C? Aye.
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 Any extensions or, or nays?
I didn't know we could abstain.
You can. But I'm not perhaps providing you that option. Okay. It looks like there's something with regard to the Audit Committee report. So did Dan or Arlene want to go through that item?
I'll start and then kick it over to the Chair of the Audit Committee. On the agenda is a resolution to accept the risk assessment update, which was reviewed last week with the Audit Committee in detail. The risk assessment update is stable overall with slight increases in the Acum Partners metrics due to new employees in both payroll and treasurer roles. And I think therefore it, it makes logical sense that the focus area for the audit that Acum is recommending would be human resources and payroll, which was last done maybe five or six years ago, but with an entirely new staff, it probably makes sense to target that again with this year's audit. And they would begin that within the next couple of weeks.
So Dan, the only thing I would add is that we talked, asked them also about, you know, what was their second choice? And there really wasn't a close second and made sure that we were actively closing off all the IT open items as well. And, and with both this and the external audit, we did spend a good bulk of our time talking about COVID-19 and the impact that it could have on the school. So I really appreciate the Audit Committee's participation in a, in a very robust conversation on what could have been generally is not exciting topics.
Okay. So I think we have a resolution in front of us with regard to accepting that. Can I get a motion to approve that resolution, please? Our Tom Evans with the motion.
Who was the second?
We'll go with Jen Russo, since she's on my screen. Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Great. All in favor? Anybody with a nay? Any extensions? Thank you. Dan, I think we're on the facilities.
Sure. Last week, I offered tours to the member, the board members who were on the Facilities Committee meeting and I had walkthroughs with, with Jen Russo and, and Jack Beerworth. And, you know, I think they would probably agree that the project seems to be going very well at this moment. The manpower that the general contractor and the other primes have provided so far to me is, is, is nothing short of stunning in compared to what we've seen in the past. We've had to beg contractors to get us manpower. And I stopped counting last week when I got to 30 and didn't really get to the upper floor. If you looked at our parking lot over the last month or so, it's been full every day. And, and some concerns we've had with the slow start of the project, particularly in the cafeteria area, have more than been alleviated thus far. You know, you know, anything can happen, but at this point, the progress has us targeting September 1st for all interior spaces. And, you know, we thought there were a couple areas. I think the cafeteria and the Innovation Center, we weren't sure we were going to get up and running. So we're very happy with that. And if, the most impressive areas to me are obviously Roy mentioned at the cafeteria. That space is, I'm really excited to have that. And who knows, we may be holding classes in there come September 1st, but and same thing with the, the third floor Learning Commons area. The way that just opened up a whole, you know, we had an extra wide hallway for some reason up there. And you, you tear down that wall and it's just a real impressive area. And then the, the Guidance Wing addition and and the atrium, both of those, the concrete has been poured for both of those areas and, and CMU block is going up. So all steel is on site. You know, and we had a discussion today about windows. We're expecting them by the end of the month. We don't see too many, we see a delay with wooden doors simply because the plant closed because of COVID. But if they are delayed past September 1st, you know, we would just put up temporary doors. We've done that before. So there's, there's, there's nothing procurement wise, which is delaying us either. So you know, I was kind of worried about when New York went to phase one or phase two opening, wherever private industry could get back to construction, whether we'd see a sharp drop off this week in manpower, and we did not. So we'll see how that goes. But so far, you know, we're very happy with all of our prime contractors and there hasn't been a lot of, lot of change order activity thus far. I know some is coming, but we have allowances to deal with a lot of that. So, you know, it's a pleasure to finally get up here and tell, tell a board how well a project is going.
Knock on wood, Dan.
Yeah, knock on wood every day.
I, I was one of the people who got a tour and I was impressed not only with pace of the work, but the quality of the work. It looked like they were doing a really good job. I did not notice anything that gave me cause for concern. So I, I, I really was impressed. Knock on wood.
That sounds great. Jen, any impressions from you on the tour?
Yeah, I would just echo what Dan and Jack and Roy have said, that skylight especially is, is so impressive. Guidance Center, it's hard at this point to really get a sense of, of how that's going to take shape, but the third floor looks amazing. It's totally transformed and it's just really exciting to see so much happening.
And I would open that up to any other board member next week who wants to take a walkthrough. Just, just email me and we'll figure out a time.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, Dan. Are there any, it sounds like we kind of got an Audit Committee and a Facilities Committee report. Any other committee reports worth noting? Okay. I think next, just the action calendar, we have, I guess, for the first time, you know, completely absentee ballot voting, those things. Connie, can you just tell people when those will be going out in the mail if they haven't already?
You're on mute again, Connie.
Okay. So I am happy to report that they were mailed today. So, and they were mailed first class, so they should be hitting homes in a day or two.
Okay. And so that's the ballot plus the information.
It includes, it includes voter instructions, the ballot, the return envelope, which is postage paid, and the oath envelope, which needs to be signed and filled out where the ballot goes in inserted. And also we've, we've made provisions for people who want to walk in their ballots. There will be drop boxes at the elementary entrance and at the auditorium entrance, entrance between the hours of nine to five on the weekdays.
Okay, great. And then there will be a grand opening of those ballots with you on YouTube, correct?
Correct. Live streaming of the opening of ballots starting at 5:00 PM on June 9th.
Okay, so.
A rip roaring day.
I'm sorry?
And it will be an exciting event.
Okay. And then followed by, of course, a special meeting. Hopefully we'll get them counted at a decent time.
Yeah. So everybody look out for that in the mail, please. Encourage folks you, you speak to, to look out for that in the mail. It'd be great to get a positive vote coming on the night. And then we have a meeting in the middle of June. Are there any public comments, Connie, coming in?
Only one comment came in from Margaret Major, who is, who thanks the board for accepting or keeping the budget well managed with minimal increase, with a minimal, minimal increase, 50 million. And she says, a new decade for our district. Did you get that?
Thank you, Margaret. I appreciate the, the input and the participation.
I don't see any further comments or emails. So.
Okay, thank you. With that, I think we can get a motion to adjourn and move on. So anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
No moves.
Thanks, Arlene. Thanks, Jen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Tom, Tom Kern exchanged.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
You can stay on.